7:02, I will now call this commission meeting to order. At this time, if you have any electronic devices, we ask you to please silence them. Your greeters at the door today is Deputy Public Works Director Kevin Gray and Information Technology Manager Chuck Osteen. To my far right and your far left, we have Recording Secretary Tara Lockhart. Then we have City Clerk Susan Dotteras. Then Deputy Mayor, Zone One Commissioner Lori Tolland.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome.
Zone Two Commissioner Travis Sargent.
Good evening, welcome.
Zone Three Commissioner Kristen Deaton.
Good evening.
Zone Four Commissioner Harold Riley.
Good evening, everyone, welcome.
City Manager Joyce Shanahan. Assistant City Manager Sean Finley. City Attorney Randy Hayes. And always in my far left and your far right, we have Police Chief Godfrey and Fire Chief Howard Bailey. And I'm Mayor Jason Leslie. At this time, I will call Evangelist John J.S. Sealan to do the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we are privileged to belong to a nation that says in God... We trust. We thank you for our nation guard. And we thank you for our city, the great city of Ormond Beach, and these great leaders that you've given us, Father. Blessed is the nation that whose God is the Lord, and the people whom you have chosen for your own inheritance. Father, we remember your promise to us. If my people who are called by my name shall humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven, I will forgive their sin, and I will heal their land. Father, as we humble ourselves as a city, a great city of Ormond Beach with these leaders, I pray that you would give us your restoration, your healing, your guidance, your protection, especially wisdom for these precious leaders that you appointed over us to take godly decisions that will be beneficial for you and for all of us. We love you and we praise you. We give you all the glory and honor and praise. In your precious holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May all be seated. Okay, we're going to move over to number four, Audience Remarks. Okay, sorry about that. At this time, we'll hear from those of you who have signed a card to speak about any item which is not on the printed agenda for this meeting, including any items on the consent agenda. Each person will be given three minutes. And we have... Our first speaker is Debbie Forrester.
Good evening, Debbie Forrester, Ormond Strong Commander. Never again will one generation of veterans abandon another. That is the motto of our Vietnam veterans, who continue to hold their motto and help everybody. Their service was celebrated three days ago, March 29th. Vietnam Veterans Day was officially declared by President Richard Nixon in 1974, coincided with the one-year anniversary of the withdrawal of U.S. Combat Forces from Vietnam on March 29th, 1973. Today, the holiday is officially observed. Every March 29th is referred to as National Vietnam War Veterans Day. These brave men and women have, in their military service, sacrificed their time, their talent, their strength, their ambition, their health, their lives on this earth to benefit those known and unknown to them. Many carry scars in their hearts, as well as their bodies, where dark clouds haunt their dreams at night and cloud their waking hours. It was once stated by Elmer Davis, head of the Office of War Information in World War II, "This nation will remain the land of the free so long as it is the home of the brave." The price of freedom has been high, and our Vietnam veterans have never been unwilling to pay that price. They're resourceful, resilient, and trailblazers, and catalysts of so many great things in our nation. I'm going to name a few. They created the Vet Center, providing counseling and support services to veterans, service members, and their families, particularly those who have served in combat, in the combat zone, or experienced MST. The POW MIA flag, that's a national flag, building awareness and support for the nearly 82,000 American service members who remain missing from not just Vietnam, but from past conflicts. Our local hero Vietnam veteran Judge David Beck created the Veterans Court in Volusia County, offering a judicially monitored, problem-solving approach for veterans facing criminal charges, focusing on treatment and rehabilitation rather than traditional incarceration. We all salute Vietnam veterans, their families, and for those of you here tonight that do not fully understand the sacrifice, the fear, and the loss that comes with war, please know we can listen with our hearts and welcome our soldiers home. To all Vietnam veterans, their family members, their spouses, thank you for your service and sacrifice. And to all Vietnam veterans, welcome home. Ormond Strong out. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Also, our goodwill ambassador, Tara. We're proud of you. Next speaker is Richard Sawicki. I might have pronounced that wrong, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and all of you gentlemen and ladies in the audience. I am Richard Sawicki, the President of VVA here in Volusia County, Chapter 1048. I am here to honor you, and Lori Tolland, and everybody else in reference to supporting us as veterans. I wish to present two certificates. Vietnam Veterans of America, the Welcome Home Chapter, 1048 Daytona Beach, Florida, wishes to honor and recognize the City of Ormond Beach Deputy Mayor Lori Tolland, and Mayor Jason Leslie, and special recognition of your exceptional initiative in recognizing, supporting, honoring, and dedication to the Vietnam Veterans of America and all veterans of Volusia County and beyond. Therefore, the Vietnam Veterans of America, Chapter 1048, bestows upon you the citation for your distinguished leadership in supporting all veterans. Signed by myself, Richard W. Sawicki, President of this chapter. Please come forward and accept us if you can.
Yeah, if you can, I'll give it to the City Clerk right there, and she'll pass it along.
This one we can give to you, sir.
Okay, I really appreciate it. And you have one for Deputy Mayor?
Thank you so much.
Wow. Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Do you want me to hand them to the...
Please.
And besides that, sir, it's my honor to give you a token of our chapter from Vietnam veterans, and every time you look at this, never forget us, the Vietnam veterans. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
You must forget us.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for the effort, and thank you, and we hope to gather again together and have a good time again. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mike Manis.
City Commissioners, Mayor, I first would like to say thank you for your support for the River Bend Trail System. You have been great in supporting us, and I want to take this opportunity to personally say thank you. Our current successes, I'd like to go over with you. We started this in 2018 with Parks and Rec, and Robert has been super to support us. We have over 80 volunteers that work with us. We've got over $20,000 in donations that have been given to support us. We've purchased over 12 loads of Shore Rock distributed throughout the trail system. We've removed over four dump truck loads of trash, homeless debris that was on the trail system, including the property that was just recently purchased. We have cleanup days, trail trim days, workdays, and also remove the beer bottles and the trash that are along the shoulders of the rideaway, especially after Bike Week. We have another thing going on currently right now in progress, it's called the Kids Zone. That's going to be at the park, and that's a work in progress right now. We currently have six miles of trails on our system. We've logged in over 1,000 man-hours of time. We're well-supported by the local businesses and sponsors. This trail is not only known and used by hundreds of local people, but it is also known nationally as well. If you can look at YouTube and see some videos that have been posted there that recognize the city of Ormond Beach, which was very well done. Future expansion, you have a copy of a proposed map that I've given you all, and I'd like to talk to you about the River Bend Golf Course that's closed down, that is currently not of use, that we have laid out a map of two trails. One is a proposed trail of a multi-use path, that is dogs walking, hiking, whatever, and the other is an addition to the bike trail. We currently have six miles with the addition, we'll add another six miles, which should give us 12 total, and that would put us well on the map of a highly recognized, sought-after bike park. Our volunteers take a lot of pride in this system, they put a lot of sweat equity into this. And by doing this expansion, it would allow us to meet the objectives that have already been identified in the city currently, the Parks and Rec's master plan of the addition of more trails. So I would just like to bring this to your attention, for your recognition, and for your blessings, and ask for your permission to move forward in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Ed Bobinski, 30 Melrose Avenue. I'm here to voice... I don't speak for any group, but I am here to voice a concern about our neighborhood. And this is something that we've been trying to address for the last couple of years, and I have to thank everybody involved in the town in trying to address this issue, particularly Travis Sargent, Mr. Mason, some of the other folks. This is in regards to Florida Statute 621.213B. Code Enforcement Officers cannot investigate potential violations based on anonymous complaints. This has been, I guess, in effect for about two years now, and neighborhoods have deteriorated. I have to say, my wife and I are going to be soon celebrating our 10th year in the beautiful city of Ormond Beach. 10 years, Travis, it's a long time. And things have gotten worse. There are more storage containers, boats, cars, derelict cars, derelict boats. In my surrounding neighborhood, it's horrible. It's horrible. And the reason behind it is this statute. I have seen the response people have gotten after they called and made a complaint. I've seen the response of citizens to our civil servants after they tried to impose just having somebody follow a rule, a simple rule, to keep your property clean, to get the garbage out of your yard, to move a car, to move a storage container that's actually a railroad storage container. I think what we need to do is reconsider our town being reactive and become proactive. If you consider that, I know it's going to be a lot of work. There's a lot of things to catch up to, but I think we need to be proactive. I think we need to get the word out as what the code is, I think a lot of people don't know. I have a couple suggestions, my neighbors have had a couple suggestions, we've tried to meet the suggestions of the town. It just hasn't worked. I've sent an email to all of you, I hope you had a chance to read it. It has my email address on it. Feel free to get in touch with me, be happy to meet with any of you at any time. Have a good day. Thank you.
Next up is Denise Corley. Yeah, is it... Oh, you know what? Yeah, yeah, but it's...
But it's the consent, and it's during audience remarks.
Yes. Yeah, it should come up now, yep. Sorry, you should come up now, yeah, because this door, yeah.
Okay, I'll pass that, because I wanted to hear what was going to be said first before I...
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry about that confusion. We need to have the dialogue from the podium, so it gets recorded. Yeah, yeah, well, she's going to opt out to not speak, so I'll just put that on the record. Okay. Next up is John Meesal.
Thank you all for your time. My name's John Meesal, I live at 16 Eagle Court in Timocoak Oaks. I wanted to just reemphasize the need for a statement to keep people from destroying our green spaces, when you got an R2 neighborhood that was built that way to include all the green space of the Sampsoni Golf Course. Just because a group of investors wants to put 317 houses out there, we need to make sure that can't happen. All you got to do is drive through that neighborhood, I don't care when you do it, during daylight hours, and you could almost any time see somebody almost get injured on those roads, because you got cars parked on the streets, kids are shooting in and out of cars, there's no sidewalks, that area cannot handle the traffic of development inside that area. I won't waste any more of your time, that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Leslie, Council, City Manager, Assistant, and Attorney. My name is Nanette McKeel-Patrella, and I am here as the President of Daytona Dog Beach Inc. Today, Volusia County Council approved the Dog Friendly Beach in Ormond Beach. I want to thank you all for the support you have shown for the Dog Friendly Beach Pilot in 2023, and again, for your support to make it permanent. Our organization was able to deliver significant data to support the county's decision. It included letters of support from you, the Ormond and Daytona Regional Chambers of Commerce, other nonprofits, along with residents and tourists. Our petition in support of the Dog Friendly Beach is currently at 3,726 signatures. 60% are people from Volusia County, 40% from people around the United States. As I shared with the Council this morning, this was but a dream, freedom for people to simply take their dog for a walk or a drive along the shore, or relax in the beach chair with their dog by their side. And we acknowledged that the pursuit of that freedom required significant effort. We believe our grassroots, community-driven pursuit of the dream strengthened the community bonds, promoted health and welfare of people and pets, increased environmental stewardship, demonstrated enhanced economic impact, and inspired people to once again believe in their power and potential to improve their community. The vote today to approve this ordinance not only made our dream come true, but it also went a long way to restore people's faith that government is listening to the community, both Ormond Beach City Council and Volusia County Council. It serves as an acknowledgement to the many people who were willing to give of their time, talents, and gifts to bring a Dog Friendly Beach to reality. They represent the best among us, those who volunteer to step up and take positive action to contribute to the community, enhancing the quality of life for all. Thank you again. Our organization looks forward to continuing financial and volunteer support, not only for Ormond Dog Beach, but to work with Ormond Beach on other opportunities to support your certification as a pet-friendly city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is John Beierworth. I said that wrong, sorry.
My name is John Beierworth. I live at 27 Kennelworth Ave., Ormond Beach. And first of all, I'd like to say thank you to the city staff. I've talked to a bunch of you, Chief Travis, Harold, City Manager. We've met many times over this house, one away from me essentially on Kennelworth. It's been a consistent problem. I've been a resident there, same house, for almost 30 years, and for the past six years, we've been dealing with this lady who owns the house. There's other ownership in Canada. But to say the least, there's been a ton of problems, and things never seem to get straightened out. But just going to highlight a few things, she doesn't pay taxes. People have bought her tax certificates, little, get a little interest, she hasn't paid her own taxes in 10 years. She sucks up all the resources the city provides between police, fire, garbage. Actually, today I watched somebody else put their garbage in her lot, and it's still sitting there today. The city has been there and done some things with a couple dumpsters, but it's repeat junk and scrapping that's going on there, among other things. The person that owns the house is a convicted criminal, along with all their other cohorts. There's been drug overdoses, multiple arrests, multiple deaths, violations, somebody shot their finger off. There's a long history. Now, they're renting the house and building a shed so they can live in the back shed. Now, if everybody does that, I'd love to do that, rebuild my shed, live there, rent out my house. It can't happen, and Ormond Beach can't handle it. So that's one thing hopefully we're working on. There's also been, her dogs are loose all the time, some of her dogs attacked some other dogs and killed them. So her dogs were euthanized, which is a good thing. But again, there's no code enforcement, there's no zoning, there's no permits for all the building they're doing in this back shed. They're up all night. I work for an insurance company, and my wife's a nurse, many sleepless nights dealing with the people coming and going. There was a kid on a motorcycle there, coming and going, four, five in the morning consistently. And I've had words with all these people, almost come to the point of confrontation, but I'm not going to jeopardize my life over them. But it's a consistent problem, and it's getting really bad. And again, this has been the past six years at least. And again, we have met with the city folks, and I want to thank you all for your time on this, and hopefully we can work through it. But I'm just hoping something can get done, because she doesn't pay attention to anything. She puts on a good story when everybody comes around, but she doesn't comply with anything, and it's really bothersome after all this time. But again, I'd like to thank you all for doing what you can.
Thank you. Next up is Councilman Troy Kent.
Honorable Mayor and honorable City Commissioner, it is great to be before you this evening. Troy Kent, 130 Magnolia Drive, Ormond Beach. Couple of things I want to talk to you all about, I have a couple of updates for you. But the first thing I want to discuss is relationships, and I just want to talk about how important they are in my life, and how impactful they have been in our community. Thank you collectively as a government body for that relationship, and individually as well. Your county council today directed our county manager and our county attorney to meet with their county parks with the city of Ormond Beach. Ms. Shanahan and Mr. Reckonwall will be reaching out to you, Mr. Hayes, Michael Dyer will be reaching out to you as well, to discuss next steps with the fuel farm. I'm going to leave it at that, but it's in, the conversation is now in there, in your capable hands, I'm sure. You heard Nanette earlier, but I wanted to publicly come and tell you that your Volusia County Council today unanimously, unanimously, approved the dog-friendly section of the beach in Ormond Beach to be permanent. It was not lost on the council that this elected body wrote two letters to our county council stating your support for such a wonderful thing in our community. Volusia County is slowly but surely giving the beach back to the residents of Volusia County. And I'll just say in my closing here, it's my humble opinion that the relationship between the city of Ormond Beach and the county of Volusia is the best I have ever seen it in the past 22 years, and a huge part of that is because of you individuals. As your county councilman, I'm here to support and help your agenda and things that you need help with in Ormond Beach, I'm just a phone call away. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Next up is Jennifer Bright.
Good evening. Councilwoman Kent, at the county council meeting today, mentioned that he would either like to change the zoning to light industrial or outright purchase the Fuel Hall Road Fuel Farm property. Chairman Bauer also stated that he had a call from Mayor Leslie, who stated he had spoken with our city manager, and the city would like to help with the purchase of the land. Chairman Bauer stated he took that to mean money. Councilwoman Santiago stated that he would like to see the Ormond Beach City Council step up and take a vote to see if they want to buy the property if there is a willing seller. As Councilman Kent stated, the county council directed the county manager and the county attorney to reach out to the city manager and the city attorney about an agreement or desire to buy the land. I hope this council can give the residents clarification on the comments made at the county council meeting today, examples being, is the city willing or hoping to annex this property? Is the city looking to be financially involved in the purchase of this land? And if so, what amount of the taxpayers' money is the city willing to spend? Thank you.
Next up is Darla Whidnall.
Mayor Leslie, Commissioners, thank you for all you do. I would like to give a shout-out to our city arborist, Laura Yarita. She is very devoted to her job. She has helped me on several occasions when tree companies were cutting native trees down in my neighborhood without a permit. It doesn't matter where Laura is when you call her, she will either answer your question on the phone, or come to where you are if at all possible. She spends time educating the tree companies and the residents of Ormond Beach regarding our tree-cutting policies. Did you know that if you suspect a tree company may be cutting a native tree without a permit, you can ask to see their permit? You can also take a picture of the tree and get an address of a home nearby, so Laura knows where the tree is located. There have been changes to our tree-cutting codes recently, and I'm not sure that they have been formally put into our codes yet, but it still remains that a tree company needs a permit from Laura to cut or seriously trim a native tree. Can I do my other topic about Timocoak Oaks? Just a quick, okay. On the topic of the Timocoak Oaks Golf Course, residents of Ormond Beach are... On the topic of the Tomoka Oaks Golf Course, residents of Ormond Beach are staying on top of the two lawsuits that the builders have brought before our civil court and federal court against our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Darla. This time I don't have any more cards, so we're going to move to line five, approval of the minutes. The minutes for the March 4, 2025, City Commission meeting have been sent to the commission for review and posted to the city's website. Does anyone have any corrections or changes? Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody else object? Okay, the ayes have it, minutes approved. We're going to move to six now, the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are deemed routine and non-controversial. The action proposed is stated for each item. Unless the city commission removes an item from the consent agenda, no discussion on individual items will occur, and a single motion will approve all items. Does any member of the commission wish to pull any items from the consent agenda?
Move approval of the consent agenda?
I'm sorry, I would like to pull aye, please.
Aye.
We're going to pull, okay, so Deputy Mayor wants to pull aye.
I'd like to pull e, please.
Okay, Commissioner Deaton would like to pull e.
Move approval minus e and aye.
Say it again.
I move approval minus e and aye.
Okay, second. Okay, any discussion? Okay, call the vote, please, City Clerk.
Commissioner Tallent?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Brierley?
Yes.
Mayor Leslie?
Yes.
Okay, now we're going to move to the pulled items. So we'll go with six.
Six e.
Okay, here we go.
Resolution number 2025-73, a resolution accepting a proposal from Freeze &amp; Nichols, Inc., for professional services to provide a watershed analysis of the Ormond Terrace neighborhood, authorizing execution of a work authorization thereto and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2025-73, read by title only.
Okay, do we have a motion for approval?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Yes, please. I would like to ask staff to speak to this, if you don't mind. I would like to go on record and say that I am perplexed by the amount that we spend on studies. I do understand this one is a hydraulic model for water directions, which is causing the amount. However, I would like staff to speak to it, but I would like to be on record that I don't love the amount we spend on studies.
Any other discussion? Oh, there you go, Sean's coming up. Okay, Sean Finley.
I'm going to bring a quick, Sean Finley, Assistant City Manager, I'm going to bring a quick PowerPoint update, go over a couple of things. Just to kind of show you the project area that we're working with. This is the area that is essentially North Granada Boulevard, South Sanchez Park, between Beach Street and US 1.
It did?
Oh, it did? These are, I think I'm working here, these are the conditions, these are some of the things that are going into this analysis. And I do respect the concern about a study. This is really the first phase of design. And in order to do that design, we need to do a hydraulic analysis. What it will do is it will take a look at existing conditions. It will develop those sub-basins and take a look at what's going on there now. One of the areas, one of the reasons why we've identified this as really being the next phase of areas that we see the most flooding issues in the city currently. The past decade, 15 years, we worked in Central Park. This is that area that was developed in the 50s and 60s. We have a lot of undersized pipe, a lot of broken pipe, a lot of, not necessarily as many inlets as we need, and we're seeing the impact of the river coming up on us. So we're going to establish the basins. This next one is a big one, the hydro, the tailwater. One of the biggest mistakes that we see when people put together design calculations is not accounting for what's downstream. And so that's one of the things that they're going to establish is what that tailwater condition is. They will then create a hydraulic model, they'll use the existing site data, and tell us what's out there now. Then they will put together what we need to do to make it better in that area. And using that existing data, they'll propose where we need to have pipes. It will allow us to properly size the pipes. Right now, as I mentioned, there's a lot of areas where we have eight and 10-inch and 12-inch pipes. Our land development code requires new subdivisions to have no less than a 15-inch pipe. So it tells us where we need a 15-inch, 18-inch, 24-inch pipe that's sufficient size to make sure that we get the water conveyed out of these areas and have that local flooding eliminated. It will provide essentially, give us the basis for design, so that the next phase of design is really more than, not much more than a drafting exercise. Get us, so that we'll be able to put together our construction documents, put it out to bid, and get us to that next phase. So I do respect, you know, the concern, and a lot of times, the, you know, studies do not go very far. This is a true analysis of it, it's engineering calculations that go along with the design of these areas. Helps us to, it will help us to prioritize those areas. It'll help us to get estimates for what we need to do, so that we can do our capital planning out five, 10 years, and start working through these areas. This is not an area that we're going to solve completely in a year or two. It's going to take us a number of years of projects, five or six years. It'll help us also to go out and get some grant funding to be able to do it. Having calculations that show what we need, having good, solid estimates will help us to get, be able to get some additional funding from the state, from the Water Management District, from some different agencies that'll help us to move forward. Trying to move forward. How do you, oh, thank you. I think a question that maybe someone may have is, why are we, why are we going, why did we not put this out for an RFP to select someone? We are required, as are all entities, to follow Florida's Consultant Competitive Negotiation Act. That was established by the Florida Legislature in 1973 to make sure that we select our consultants on qualifications, not on price. So what that does is it allows us to go through, make sure that we have people who are qualified and have experience in doing these types of things. We utilized, and the proposals we have is from one of our continuing contracts. We have, and I'll show you the next sheet, about 16 different categories of consultants groups that we draw from. We've gone through a very robust selection process to make sure that we have these people qualified. Does that mean that we ask someone for a proposal and give them a blank check? No, we hold them to it. We take a look at their hours based, and we go to the rates that they're charging us, and their number of hours, and make sure that it makes sense for what we're looking for. This is a pretty involved process, and I know that, I think this is just shy of $300,000. It, you know, that's a lot of money. But given the area that we're doing here, I think that it's warranted, and we've really taken a look at what the firm is proposing, and the amount of time that it's going to take them to do this work is, I feel justified. So, you know, when we go through the CCNA process, we announce the contract, we qualify the firms, we select firms, we negotiate a professional service contract, and then if we were to approach them and not be able to see eye to eye on what we feel is the cost, we would go to a second one. You know, it doesn't mean that we can't negotiate a price, but it means that that's not the first criteria that we look at. Susan, are you able to go to the one last sheet? One more. These are the continuing contract categories that we have. There's a number of them. It's a very lengthy process that we go through, and we go through that process simply to kind of do what we hear a lot of people say, eliminate some of that bureaucracy of that extra step of having to go through and consult, select consultants. So I hope that answered your question.
Yes, that does help. I understand the need for watershed and drainage improvements. And just for the record, this is not a study we can do in-house, correct?
This is not a study we can do in-house. Number one, staff time, it's very intensive staff time. Number two, the modeling programs are quite expensive. It wouldn't make sense for us as a city to own that program for as often as we use it. Those consultants purchase those, in fact, today it's not purchasing, it's licensing. And that licensing of that program is tens of thousands of dollars a year for those firms. So that's why we don't do those things in-house.
All right, thank you.
Nevermind, thank you.
Sean, one question. So just to summarize this, there's still potentially is going to be another study after this, before we're shovel-ready. Did I understand that right?
What this will do is this will take us to the point where we can start putting together construction plans. So it will outline where we need inlets, what size pipes we need, and get us to a point where that next phase, and help us to phase it as well, to work our way through, you know, the logical way, maybe from Granada Boulevard north to Sanchez Park, or maybe the opposite direction, where those priorities are, where we need to do those plans, and give the information so that when they put together those plans, like I said, it's essentially a drafting exercise, putting pencil to paper to get construction documents ready to put out to bid.
Thank you, Sean. Anybody have any questions for Sean?
I do.
Deputy Mayor?
I do. Go ahead, Kristen.
I just said thank you.
Okay.
All right, so I think this is a critical analysis, and thank you for putting that together. I just wondering if you can share with me where the Ormond Lakes analysis is in relation to this. We had talked about that a few years, a year ago maybe, and so I know things come before and we're slow, so just...
The Ormond Lakes analysis is a separate analysis, and we are utilizing Volusia County's Transform 386 program to fund that. That analysis and the contract to the consultant was awarded at this morning's Volusia County Council meeting.
Beautiful, thank you.
So we're moving along with that one as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Anybody have any questions for Sean? No? Okay. From there, any other discussion before I call a vote here? No? City Clerk, call a vote, please.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Brierley?
Yes.
Commissioner Tallent?
Yes.
Mayor Leslie?
Yes. Okay, we're going to move to consent, aye.
Resolution number 2025-77, a resolution establishing a method for reimbursement of local road impact fee credits for the Ridge Haven planned residential development in accordance with the proportionate fair share agreement provided by Resolution 2023-152, authorizing and directing the reimbursement of same and setting forth an effective date. This is the resolution number 2025-77, read by title only.
Okay, at this time, do I have a motion for approval?
I move.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Yeah, so I was hoping I could have Stephen come up and explain to me why we are reimbursing this impact fee.
Good evening, Stephen Spraker, Planning Director. So in 2023, there was a proportionate fair share agreement with the Ridge Haven subdivision. As a result of their traffic study, they were required to pay $362,000 for traffic impacts. As part of that agreement, they're allowed to get impact fee credits as they come in and build homes. So you can't charge them both the 362 plus the impact fees on top. That's per our Florida Land Development Code and Florida statutes. So as the builders come in, the original developer will get those impact fees. The city keeps the $362,000 that was part of the traffic study, and you get it upfront. So as they went to infrastructure improvement, they were required to pay it. So that is how we got to this agreement.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
All right, absolutely.
Any other questions for Stephen? No? Thank you very much, Stephen. At this time, I will ask the City Clerk to call a vote.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Brierley?
Yes.
Commissioner Tallent?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Mayor Leslie?
Yes. Any commissioners wish to comment on anything on the consent agenda items?
Yes, I'd love to comment on D, if I can, real quick.
Sure.
I, this is the first project the city of Ormond Beach has done with GPS Civil Construction, who specializes in underground utilities. They've done a number of projects for neighboring municipalities, and Ormond was the last one. They came in the most competitively priced bid. The project will replace collapsed stormwater pipe with a larger diameter pipe, increasing stormwater drainage capacity, which we definitely need. The owner is an Ormond resident, I'm happy to say, and I look forward to see more utility projects with GPS Civil Construction.
Thank you, Commissioner Deaton. Would any other commissioner like to comment on the consent agenda items at this time, before we move on? Okay, we're going to move on to seven now. City Clerk, please read the title, 7A.
Ordinance number 2025-13, an ordinance amending Section 11-1 fluoridation of water supply of Article 1 in general of Chapter 11 Health Sanitation and Environmental Protection of the Code of Ordinance is providing terms and conditions and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2025-13, read by title only.
Okay, I have some cards here, so I'm just going to go with a couple of comments first. First speaker I have is Bruce Mann.
Good evening, my name is Bruce Mann. I'm a citizen, resident of Ormond Beach, 1531 Oak Forest Drive. I have the privilege and the honor of being an educator and a practitioner. I'm a professor at the University of Florida. We are the largest provider of Medicaid services for children in probably north and central Florida. I do a kind of a blind study with parents as they bring their children in, and these are kids that are absolutely scared to death. I ask them, are they on city water or well water? 90 to 95% of every parent has the same answer, well water. The amount of decay that we see in these children, it's rampant. The amount of decay that we see in the children that are not, that are on city water where the water is fluoridated, which happens to be in 72% of the communities in this country, it's, there's no comparison. One of our practitioners did kind of a gross assay of what it would cost you for taking fluoride out of the water, and he came up with basically the cost of a new car for each parent or each individual when they take fluoride out of the water. And that's how much more we are going to require for dental care. And as practitioners, we're here saying to you that we don't, we're doing this against our pockets, per se. We don't want the money. Our offices are busy enough without the fluoride, without seeing patients that are on fluoride. Without fluoride, we will be swamped. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bruce. At this time, I'd like to call David Brown.
Mayor Leslie, City Commissioners, my name is David Brown, 151 Winward Circle. I'm a retired dentist. I practiced dentistry in Ormond Beach for 40 years, practiced 35 years of that with my dental school classmate and partner, Jim Schumelarsky, in our office across Metraile Shopping Center. I'm here to speak to you tonight about the continuing to use fluoride in the water system. We know the fluoride works, because much research many years ago found that communities with relatively lacking in tooth decay as compared to those communities that did have tooth decay. Research found that those communities with less decay had naturally occurring fluoride. You probably already know that. Further studies determined that one part per million was an appropriate level to reduce any type of side effects. Ormond Beach has a lower level than that, which is good. Fluoridated water does not benefit adults. It's used to increase the hardness of tooth enamel in developing children. It only helps in developing the teeth of a child. It works by including the fluoride in the tooth enamel as the tooth develops, and it's especially beneficial to control cavities in between the teeth. A child that drinks city water or eats food prepared by being cooked in city water, like pasta and rice and mac and cheese, get those benefits. While attending dental school at the University of Florida, I was involved in a study to determine the effectiveness of ceilings. Students from Gainesville and nearby Alachua, volunteer, it's Alachua, volunteered to have their teeth sealed on the biting surface of their teeth. Gainesville had fluoride in the city water supply, Alachua did not. It was only 30 miles away. Students from Gainesville continued to be part of the study, but the Alachua students were not able to continue because of the badly decayed teeth. I saw the difference between, the fluoride made between these children with the water supply, including fluoride, and water supply not including fluoride. There's fluoride present in a number of over-counter products that you brush or paint or ingest, but none of those help a child. They might help an adult a little bit, but not a child. child. They might help an adult a little bit, but not a child. I'd like to thank several dentists who pioneered having fluoride added to the Orman Beach city supply back in the 60s and 70s, dentists like Tom Cartledge and Steve Stamper, Leo Rump and others. Everyone who can say that they grew up in Orman Beach should thank these guys for the fact that they probably have better dental health than they would have if they hadn't put fluoride in the water. My wife Cookie and I have two children, ages 51 and 48, who grew up in Orman and have yet to have a single cavity. Not because of me, but because of the fluoride in the water of Orman Beach. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, up next is Sean McDonald. And by the way, I appreciate the clapping, but just try to keep it minimal. We do have rules here. Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Sean McDonald. I'm a pediatric dentist. I've been practicing for over 20 years. Three years as a Navy dental officer and over 17 years here in Volusia County. I've had an office here in Orman Beach with my partner, Dr. Kathy Parsons, for 12 years. I'm here tonight to voice my support for keeping fluoride in Orman Beach's water. Since fluoride was introduced into toothpaste and community water supplies 80 years ago, actually this year, it'll be 80 years this year, our nation has seen a 60 to 70% drop in dental decay. The American Dental Association estimates that 25% of the overall decrease in decay is due to community water fluoridation. In 2024, Orman Beach families spent $291,713 treating their children's dental decay in my Orman Beach office alone. Now, the children that I see in my office obviously represent a tiny slice of Orman Beach's population. But with a 25% increase in dental decay if fluoride is removed from the water, Orman Beach families can expect to see an increase of $72,928 per year in my office alone. According to the Orman Beach Observer, the City of Orman Beach spends $14,800 per year to fluoridate the water. On the micro level, this vote about fluoride is about a large shift in cost burden from $14,800 yearly city investment in prevention to, in my office alone, a $73,000 increase in cost to the families of Orman Beach. On the macro level, this vote is about whether we want to continue to live within a healthcare system that profits from disease, or do we want to hold the line and start to shift to a system that profits from prevention? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Up next is Palmer Vlakie.
Okay, so you don't want to speak? No.
Oh, okay. I guess we can allow that. Can we allow that? Someone else will speak on his behalf? Yeah, you have to have a, yeah, I mean, well, we had a card for him, right? I mean, you guys okay with that? The Commission, just replace cards?
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so Palmer will not be speaking. In exchange of Palmer, we're going to have Justin Harvey.
Thank you so much for your time, Mayor and members. I'm here to speak, obviously, to just encourage you to continue the good decision that you made about water fluoridation. There are so many risks that have been brought up. I'm actually a little in awe at how many people are willing to fight tooth and nail, pun intended, I guess, to defend something that has so much potential risk for pregnant women and children. I mean, it's not just one court case. It was a seven-year court case that poured over data. There were 50 studies that I brought into a county commission meeting eight years ago. So this is not a fluke. It's not political. And I just liken it to if someone's child was in danger, potentially in danger, and you said that they were, would you say, "No, prove it to me." Well, here, okay, well, here's a study. Well, I don't like that study. That's not done in the U.S. Well, here's one done in the U.S. Well, that, that one's high bias, low quality. How hard are we going to fight to not just err on the side of caution? Use the precautionary principle? I feel like that's what we were all taught to do, especially with our most vulnerable. We have over 95% of the world does not fluoridate their water. So how on earth are we going to be sold the myth that if we stop, teeth are going to rot and the sky's going to fall? We don't have a dental crisis in 95% of the world. We don't have a dental crisis in 40 of the counties in Florida that don't fluoridate or have never. 30% of the counties on well water. And personally, you know what? When I stopped using fluoride, I stopped getting cavities. But I also got healthy with different food and diet because we know that plays a big part in it. So I don't say that to say that fluoride was or was not the cause, but there's a lot of things that go into this. And at the end of the day, where there is risk, there must be choice. If everything the dentists say about fluoride being good for teeth, maybe it is. But there's also 70-plus studies linked to brain health. And if one iota, if that is true, we should at least err on the side of caution. I know there may have been good intentions when the program started many, many years ago, but why did it start? Because fluoride was not widely available. There weren't fluoridated toothpaste and mouthwash and treatments and on every corner inexpensively, and it is today. So there truly is no need for city governments to be in the dental business, spending tens of thousands of dollars a year to store and administer a highly corrosive chemical. I repeat, a chemical. It may be said tonight that it is naturally occurring while that is found in the ground at a small amount, .2, .3. We add a chemical waste from the phosphate industry. It does have a skull and crossbones on the bag, and I personally do not want to be drinking that in my water. This is why 21 cities and counties have removed it from their water. Many of the decisions were unanimous, 16 of them, including yours. So I think we made the right decision. I just, I think everyone has good intentions, but with all the evidence of all the communities that don't do it, we don't have anything to worry about, and let's give freedom of choice is the answer here. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Justin. Next up is Michelle Edwards.
Good evening. While fluoride has been widely accepted as a preventative measure for tooth decay, the mounting evidence linking it to various health risks demands our attention. One of the most concerning effects is its interference with ionine uptake, which is critical for healthy thyroid function. A properly functioning thyroid regulates metabolism, growth, and development, especially in children. As a community, we cannot afford to overlook these risks. Now, let's consider the broader picture. The National Institute of Dental and Craniofacial Research tells us that tooth decay remains the number-one chronic disease in children and adults in the U.S., despite nearly 75% of our water being fluoridated, according to a report by the CDC in 2022. So I ask you, if fluoride truly works as a solution, why are these statistics still so alarming? Historically, the idea behind fluoridating water was that after drinking it, it would eventually reach our teeth or children's developing teeth and systemically strengthen the enamel. But with this theory, it has since been debunked by modern science. Despite this, institutions like the American Dental Association continue to promote fluoridation. I understand that many dental professionals are here tonight and support a fluoride, but I believe we need to look beyond the dental perspective and consider the potential harm this practice might be causing to our overall health. One key argument often raised by dental professionals is studies showing a correlation between fluoride and lower IQ were based on higher concentrations of fluoride, 1.2 to 1.5 milligrams per liter, when our city water contains only .7 milligrams per liter. While the concentration is lower, we must remember that it is a total daily dose of fluoride that leads to its toxicity. How can we truly know the exact amount of fluoride we are exposed to each day, especially when accumulated from various sources? Recent studies, such as the Cochrane Collaboration, found that fluoride reduces decay by only a quarter of a cavity per person, a quarter of a cavity. If fluoride were the miracle solution, we've been told, why are we still dealing with such high rates of tooth decay? We're missing the bigger picture here. Poor oral health is largely driven by the foods we eat, not a lack of fluoride. But instead of addressing the root cause of the problem, we continue with this Band-Aid solution. In conclusion, I strongly believe that the city's responsibility is provide clean, safe water, not medicated water. There are no barriers for those who wish to still use fluoride. Mass medicating the entire population without informed consent is both a medical and ethical issue. This is a risk-benefit analysis. Yes, fluoride may benefit the teeth, but can we say that it benefits the whole body? As a parent, I'd rather risk one quarter of a cavity than risk brain development of my child. We can fix a tooth, but can we fix a developing brain? That's a rhetorical question. Ultimately, medical professionals are trying to do a risk-benefit analysis, which evaluates each individual and their risk to send medical intervention. We cannot blanket treat everyone the same way. Informed consent is a fundamental right, and every person in Orman Beach should be given that right when it comes to fluoride in their water. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Next up is Dr. Jack Goldie. A little chicken scratch here.
I'm Jack Goldie. I've lived here probably since 1965 in Volusia County, went to Seabreeze High, and came back and practiced dentistry in Port Orange. I've studied fluoride my whole career, pretty much. I'm retired now. And there's really no discussion that it helps because I've seen it in all the literature. It's been studied for 80 years, and it's safe. The dentists have studied it, and water people have studied it. Right now, it's become a social topic, political topic, and they're using scare techniques. You know, sure, the acid is, that they add to make the harmless fluoride in the water is a hazard, but it's treated. The people that work with it, they're trained. The equipment is safe. And I just would continue to consider the source of these studies that it causes like low IQ. There's really no standard to any of these studies throughout the world that meet, you know, our modern science, the way we study it. So it's about all. Just consider the source, and if you believe in science. Just one more thing. How many of you people have taken the trouble to get a filter to remove your own fluoride in your own houses? So I'd like you to think on that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Oscar Moron.
My name's Oscar Morihong. I'm a periodontist here in Daytona Beach and in Palm Coast, and I reside here in Orman Beach, 166 Riverside Drive. I'd like to speak in favor of community water fluoridation. You know, I don't, I'm a periodontist, so I don't treat cavities. So I kind of see a lot of the end stage where, you know, we're removing teeth and, you know, those little cavities turn into bigger cavities, turn into crowns, turn into root canals, turn into fractured teeth, and then we're taking them out and we're putting in appliances and we're putting in implants. And that all becomes very expensive, you know, and I think the neediest people really benefit from fluoride because if we can kind of control that early on, it's gonna, it's gonna make it so that, you know, we don't have as many cavities going forward in life. I hear what people are saying. I mean, there's a lot of factors that go into cavities, and I'm by far, I'm not the expert. I haven't done a filling in 35 years, but, but I know that, but I get adults with cavities and I, and they're, you know, what happens with them is, is it's an oral hygiene situation or it's a diet situation. Like recently, we had gummies. I mean, you wouldn't think that vitamin gummies are bad for you, but I'm here to tell you, if you eat gummies all day with, for your vitamins, you're going to get a ton of cavities. And our adult population and their cavities are different than the kids'. If you look at the kids, they're benefiting, you know, early on, and then they're not having to have as much restorative work down the line. And that's really what you're, what you're trying to prevent. Personally, I moved here in 1995, and we had a filter in our refrigerator, and we were concerned. We had a three-year-old and a one-year-old. We were concerned about, they're, they're not getting fluoride because of the filter. We pulled the filter and we drank fluoridated water all, all through their life, and all three kids, they're all in their 30s now and, and no cavities. And so that's something that we, you know, we've benefited from, from you guys here in Orman Beach. You know, I think, I think if you look at optimal concentrations of fluoride, I think a lot of the studies that are, say, talking about, you know, these recent studies talking about neuropsychiatric risks, a lot of that is based on two times the optimal dose. And I know that we control the dose very well here, and we don't have two times the optimal dose. And, and a lot of those studies were, were, were from other areas that maybe do not have as good of a control of their water systems as we do here in Orman Beach and our neighboring cities. So bottom line, I mean, I think, you know, fluoride benefits the neediest people, the people that don't have access to care, that, the people that, that maybe are not going to be educated about their diet, and, and, and it just gives them a little bit of a boost up. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, next up is Athis Komitis.
Thank you very much for letting me speak. My name is Athis Komitis. I am a dentist in Port Orange, and I live in Wauwuru by the sea. I moved here 25 years ago, and we rented a house in the fly-in. I found out after we were renting it that they don't have fluoride in the water. So we bought fluoridated water for our kids and our family. We went to Publix, you could buy it in a gallon, drank two glasses a day. Did that for six years before we moved. I practiced in the Navy for four years. When you look in a recruit's mouth, you immediately know who had fluoride and who didn't. It's so obvious. Fluoride wipes out in-between cavities on teeth. Not the ones on top, but the ones in-between. Those are the most complex cavities you can get. Once you get those, you're going to get a crown or a root canal or something more later on. Okay? Every restoration lasts a certain amount of time. We're here in Orman Beach, and we walk down the road and we see people that are sunburned. Well, that's what it looks like in the mouth. I see sunburned teeth. We can see people that are tourists walking around with their sunburns. It's that obvious. But the real thing that gets me is, I heard different studies, and when you read studies, you have to scientifically look at them. You look at every factor that can be manipulated. When I was in school, we were taught that before fluoride, if you sampled kids that were 16, and you looked in their mouth, they called it decayed, missing, and filled teeth. If you looked at all the kids out of 100, you would find two that did not have any decayed, missing, or filled teeth. After fluoride, it's 50. And those are the complex cavities. But we have 400 years of dental knowledge in this room, 400 years, and they're arguing for you to keep the fluoride in the water so that we make less money. What industry does that? Only healthcare. Only an oncologist would tell you to stop smoking. The tobacco industry? They tell you that tobacco isn't bad for you. It's not addictive. While they were manipulating the product to get people to use more tobacco to kill you. Dentists aren't like that. Healthcare providers are not like that. We actually care about our patients. I don't want to fix another kid's tooth that doesn't have to be fixed. And it costs a lot of money, not just to pay us, but all the lost time and work. And I thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Next up is Stephen Auberg.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. I also want to thank my colleagues for also speaking as well. Reason I'd like to just say is I see fluoride from a different lens. My wife and I, we try to at least do one mission trip a year and help the needy. And recently, you guys probably know, we had Mission Mercy that was here a week ago. There was a lot of people that come from situations that they're unable to afford dentistry. And fluoride was considered one of the top 10 health, public health achievements, since it was established in 1945 in Grand Rapids, Michigan, to introduce community-based fluoride. What we see is in the communities that don't have it, it's just rampant, rampant decay, especially in the children. As some of my colleagues have mentioned, especially in the kids, you know, well, one, kids aren't exactly the best brushers or, you know, they love, you know, sugary things and whatnot, but on top of that... But on top of that, fluoride, especially systemically, it helps reinforce the teeth and helps reduce the cavities in those kids. So, it's the kids, it's the needy, and it's also the elderly that this tends to impact. And so, I know that there'd be kind of arguments that from a day-to-day or a regular working-class individual, they may not see that difference. But, you know, I think these are the people that we have to look out for in this. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Next up, we have Councilman Troy Kent.
Troy Kent, 130 Magnolia Drive. These are just my comments. I don't represent anybody else but myself. I just Googled percentage of industrialized nations that fluoridate their water. The answer was, well, the United States has a high percentage of fluoridated water. Most industrialized nations do not fluoridate their water supply. I didn't want to say, well, percentage of nations, because then we'd get the whole Third World thing and they don't have access to it and all of that. Good leaders make bold decisions, and I applaud this commission for making a bold decision a few weeks ago. Good leaders aren't afraid to make change. You could sit here and talk about hydrofluosilistic acid, fluorine, known as the promiscuous element. Oh, I've done a lot of research on this. And I'm pleased that you all were able to get something across the finish line that I was unable to get across when I sat in that seat, Mr. Sergeant, for 19 years. I'm gonna try to make this as simple as I can. At best, fluoride in the water is a medicine, at best. At worst, it's a poison. Let's go with the at best, okay? Let's not think about poisoning our community with the water. Let's not go there. Let's go with this is medicine in the water. Why aren't you adding statins to the water to help everybody's cholesterol? Why aren't you adding a little lithium? Make everybody a little happier. You know why? Because you would have pitchforks at that door saying, "How dare you medicate us with the water supply." To me, this, this is how simple it gets. Are you okay medicating everybody that drinks this water with the water supply? I heard someone, I think it was a doctor earlier, say, "It only benefits the children." Then why am I drinking it? Why is my wife and everybody else that's not a child drinking it? No one could answer for me when they brought that, they marched the Health Department in here to combat me years ago about, "What happens if someone drinks twice the allotted amount of water every day?" What about that? Don't medicate me in my water supply. There's way more options. They can go to their dentist and get a fluoride treatment for their kids. Please, don't medicate me with the water supply. Thank you.
Thank you, Troy. At this time, I don't have any more cards, so I will close to public comments. What I'll do though is just ask for a motion in a second, just for discussion purposes.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay. And what I'll do is I'll go into discussion. If you, any of you want to say anything, we can rotate however you want.
I'll go first.
Okay.
I got a lot to say. So, this past week, we all were up in Tallahassee for the Florida League of Cities and as I pulled down the street to see, to park, to go into the Capitol, big banner, Florida Dental Association. I said, "Oh, great, they're here." So, we go into the Capitol to go up to see our representatives and there was a group of dentists. And I gotta be careful because Joyce always tells me, "Be careful what you ask for." So, I walked up to those dentists and I said, "Please tell me, fluoride in the water or not?" Well, they end up riding up to the 21st floor with us. They handed me lots of paperwork, so I am, have done a lot of reading and don't make this decision lightly. And I appreciate all y'all for coming out. And I know Dr. Carlich couldn't be here tonight. He called me and he's a dear friend who I've known since, as a little kid, as I know Dr. Brown from church. And Dr. Carlich, just so y'all know, is, is my mentor. When I think of someone that I want to be like, it's Dr. Carlich. So, it's pretty tough to make a decision like this on fluoride when I know, when I first brought this up and he walked by my house after I said it, he goes, "Travis, you got this one wrong." And I said, "Doc, times have changed." So, we can agree to disagree on this. So, I'd just like to pull up some, as I said, I've done a lot of reading. December 4th, 1957 is the news article of Orman Beach, when this passed to fluoride, put fluoride in the water. And it says fluoridation squeaked past 777 to 755. Only 75% or more, of more than 3,000 eligible voters went to the polls that year. Orman was a little bit smaller than it is now. Utah, last week, just passed to take fluoride out of the water. We, as elected officials in this municipality, we fight for home rule. We don't want Tallahassee to tell us what to do. We want to make those decisions for our residents here. I know Port Orange last week or the week before said they were gonna wait to see what Tallahassee was gonna do. I don't want to wait. And just so everyone knows, fluoride's been out of our water in Orman Beach for probably four weeks now. Toothpaste, when you look at the back of it, it says if you swallow a certain amount, call poison control. Mind you, I'm no medical professional. However, I've done a lot of reading on different studies and this is a very tough topic because no matter which way you want to sway, you can find data to prove certain things. I was at CVS a couple days ago and you look in the bottled water for babies and you have an option for fluorinated water or non-fluorinated baby water. If we're putting this chemical, medicine, however you want to label it, in our water, we're not giving our residents an option. We're mandating that they have fluoride and they're required to drink it. There's no choice there. Also, our population in Orman Beach, persons under five, is 5.7% of our population. So, we're doing this, medicating a whole population for 5.7%. Like I said, I have lots of information. I don't take this lightly. I'll refer back to Councilman Kent, when he sat in this seat and he fought for many years to get fluoride out. He said, um, pardon me, I'm just reading through here. At the time, he sent letters to 47 chemical manufacturers to get a breakdown of what chemicals were in fluoride. Do you know how many responses he got? These were certified letters. Zero. No one responded. However, when he did get a list of what was in the chemical being, introduced into our water system, there was traces of arsenic in that. So, I'd like to ask, what levels of arsenic is safe to ingest for a human being? I don't think any. We can go on and on, I won't bore you all night long, but I just want y'all to know I don't take this lightly. This is just some of the data that I've read, case studies, reasons for it, reasons against it. I'm not willing to put a medicine in water. I think we should be making our water as pure as possible. Do you know if you go to the store and you try to get toothpaste that doesn't have fluoride in it, you almost have to specially order it? Everything has fluoride in it. Foods have fluoride in it. And I understand, like Councilman Kent said about Third World countries, we're Orman Beach. We're not a Third World country. We have access to fluoride. Actually, in, in public schools, they still swish once a month or so with fluoride. So, I, like I said, I don't take this lightly. I appreciate all the medical professionals and all the scientific data. But at the end of the day, I am here to provide safe water to the residents of Orman Beach. Therefore, I will be voting to yes for this ordinance to continue to change it. And I look forward to hearing the rest of y'all, but that's where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Sergeant. Oh, Commissioner Riley.
I'll just start by asking, is there a dentist in the house? Because we've heard from a lot of them tonight. And I want to thank you all for coming and sharing your, your expertise with us. This item, for me, is, is a difficult one. As Commissioner Sergeant stated, this was voted upon by Orman Beach's residents in the 1950s. And in the 1950s, my grandfather was the engineer of record for the city of Orman Beach. And they passed him with the subject of reviewing or looking into putting fluoride in the water. And his recommendation to them was, yes, you can do it. And they, I guess, made adjustments or what have you to the water treatment plan and began putting fluoride in the water. But when you look at that time in our country's history, fluoride was just actually being introduced into toothpastes. 1955 or 56 is when Crest first started adding fluoride to toothpaste. So, you had a lot of people who didn't have access to fluoride because a lot of toothpaste back then didn't have fluoride. Fast forward to 2025 and we have most, I think as Commissioner Sergeant said, most, most toothpastes do have fluoride. We also have fluoridated mouthwash. So, I think access to fluoride is not as difficult as it was back when they put fluoride into the water. I do support removing the fluoride from the water at this point. The beauty is, we can always put it back if down the road, we find there's an issue. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm, that's where I stand and I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Riley. Commissioner Deaton, would you like to speak?
Yes, I would. I do appreciate everybody coming out. I appreciate my orthodontist being here. I appreciate my son's dentist being here. I struggle with this one. I grew up in Orman Beach City Water. I've had a number of cavities myself. My orthodontist can attest that I am very OCD about my teeth. I don't consider myself generally unhealthy, although I do eat an unhealthy amount of Chick-fil-A. I will say that. My son is nine. He grew up in Orman Beach City Water his entire life. He's had a number of cavities. He's had sealants. He's had a cracked tooth. He's had all the things. Now, he's a boy, he's nine, but I really struggle with this one. I've had an overwhelming amount of constituents reach out and ask for the fluoride to be removed. Overwhelming. I had a few constituents reach out and say they would be a proponent, most in the dental industry. While I very much respect all of you being here, I am in favor of keeping the fluoride out of the water.
Thank you, Commissioner Deaton. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank our local advocates and our dental friends for sharing their experience with fluoride and their personal practices. I will say, before I even talk, that I am willing to look at removing the mandate in our code of ordinances regarding fluoride because I know we have that ability to put fluoride in the water if we choose to. As I stated, the first two times that we talked about this, I was fairly neutral about the whole topic because I had done all that research as well and I saw flawed studies for and against. I think, you know, studies, unless you can replicate them, they can be manipulated to show whatever results you want to see. So, I still feel conflicted with the data and I've heard and I've read, what I've heard and what I've read about community fluoridation. Our Surgeon General recommends removal. The state of Florida is presently moving a bill through the House and the Senate to eliminate community fluoridation. I've received a few calls from outside advocates thanking us for removing fluoride. We've also heard a very strong argument from Mr. Vowchik and his daughter Amy to keep fluoride in the water. And we heard tonight from our local dentists, the importance of fluoride in their practice locally and their experience with our residents. I too have received calls, just like you all, but I've also received calls from my constituents warning fluoride back in the water. I'm not an expert and I actually was wondering, when I was thinking about this this morning, why fluoride, why only fluoride is considered the bad guy, the medicine or the poison, and not any of the other numerous chemicals or forever chemicals that are found in our drinking water? My personal opinion is I choose to use fluoride, and my dentist and orthodontist is in this room as well, and I've had, I grew up in DC where fluoride was part of the, the water system and continued it here, and my children have had very good success with their cavity, with their lack of cavities. So, what I want to say is I was elected to serve the residents and represent them. These residents shared their local experiences tonight, compelling us to reconsider community fluoridation. There is a strong possibility that Tallahassee will pass a ban on fluoride and there will not even be an option to discuss. But in the meantime, I would like us, I, I think it would make sense for us to consider placing at least the choice to choose fluoride on the next ballot for the residents to decide. So, that's kind of where I'm at with that. I know, I, I've heard you all tonight that you want to take fluoride out, but I think that, you know, this is a local issue for us. It's not a political issue and I would, I think would make sense for us to consider putting it on a ballot. And we don't have to make that decision tonight, but if you want to weigh in, feel free.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Commissioner Riley, you want to say something?
I would just concur with Commissioner Talan. I think that's a grand idea.
Okay. Well, I, I think that, like we know though, that we have to also maybe see what the legislature's gonna do too also, because that might hinder that whole idea too. But thank you though for that and thank you all my colleagues for everything you guys said. And I'm gonna echo.
Do you have, do you have an opinion about all of this?
I mean, I would be open to the idea of, you know, a public vote, you know, open, but, you know, not 100%, but I'd have to look at cost and all that, you know.
I know you said that you had two residents in your, oh, in your family, dentist in your family. Have they changed their mind on this or have you had any discussions further? I just think it's great that we have medical professionals guiding us and I appreciate all y'all. I just.
No, so I'll give you a little background. I actually had to, I wasn't sure if the town I grew up in had fluoride, so I had to backtrack a friend of a friend that was, worked for the water plant and they actually did have fluoride, something I didn't know until this whole conversation came up. And I could tell you that I lived at the dentist, you know, with cavities and everything else. And I went pretty often too. I think I'd go twice a year. So, the, the effectiveness of fluoride didn't work for me for some reason. I know, you know, just because, like I said, I was a dentist several times. Even today, as an adult, I have to go twice a year. I will echo, are you done with your closing comments, by the way, Deputy Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't want to jump over you.
You're done though. I do have one more. I'm sorry. Go ahead, finish.
Okay. So, I would just say that I, I'm gonna echo my colleagues here on everything that they've, they've said, you know, Commissioner Sergeant and Commissioner Deaton and all of yous that, you know, I'm on the same page here. And we could also, you know, reverse this thing at some point too. I mean, you know, what we just did here can, can be reversed right back, you know, pretty quickly without legislation, of course, you know, state legislature getting involved. But, you know, I've had a lot of calls and emails and I had more people actually giving me information in favor of removing the fluoride. This is the first time that I've seen a bigger group of people speak against it. And I know many who work in the industry, so that, that's probably the reason why. But I gotta tell you that, you know, just, just how I feel about it and this is a hard decision. I mean, because, you know, I mean, our jobs as elected officials here is to, you know, it's public safety, always priority and, you know, but I'm gonna have to go with yes on, you know, the ordinance here. And like I said, once we get some data back and we know some other things, maybe that could change. But right now, I just, that's what I'm weighing on right now. But right now, I just, that's what I'm weighing on right now. With that, Commissioner Sargent.
Just like the one comment is fluoride is in our water to treat humans. The other chemicals are in there to treat water. Just to put that out there. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, and then lastly, one of the doctors said something about dose and dosage, and I'm thinking dosage, you know, that sounds like medicine, right? I mean, so to have a dosage in something in water that we drink, I don't know, I'm just not a big fan of it, but I'm going to stay with yes on the ordinance right now. With that said, if the Commission doesn't have any more thing, anything else to say, we do have a motion right now in a second, so I can call a vote here. Oh, you can call a vote, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Talland.
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Mayor Leslie.
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move on to 7B. City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance Number 2025-14. An ordinance amending Chapter 2 District and General Regulations, Article 6, overlay Districts, Section 2-71, Historic Districts and Landmarks of the City of Ormond Beach Land Development Code. By removing the property located at 63 Civil Street, the Barbie House, from the Ormond Beach Historic Landmarks List, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, providing for severability and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2025-14, read by title only.
I don't have any cards for this. Do we need the Stephen Spraker to speak on this?
Move approval. Second. Approval. Ordinance 2025-14.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
And Stephen, I think I read through this. The reason this is coming off is because they're doing some renovations to the property, which may alter its historical character. You know, I know in our ordinance for historical structures, and I, you know, I hate to keep seeing these structures come off the list, because that's part of who we, you know, our historical buildings are part of who we are. I know that in the past, these structures had to come off for significant interior alterations, even if the outside didn't change. And I'm wondering if we can make it so to keep, because they do still have historical, perhaps a historical architectural significance on the exterior, if we couldn't change that to where, you know, whatever they do on the inside, that's one thing. I do know some of these have been added on to the backside in the past, some of that stuff you don't see from the street. It's just a thought. And I know that would be a policy coming from us to staff, if we want to change that.
In 2010, there were some amendments to what is required for certificate appropriateness. So changing like material to like material, like reroutes, windows. The thing that that code amendment didn't do is when they were doing a major addition, it still requires review by the Historical Landmark Preservation Board. So if this applicant is doing an addition, it would have required that review from the Historical Landmark Preservation Board. The applicant, in this case, is not substantially changing the characteristics, they just don't want to go through that review. So the structure still is historic, it's just not on our list. It's still historic by age, so if a demolition were required, it would still have that review.
Right.
So it's a balancing act.
Okay. Thanks, Stephen.
So anyone have other questions for Stephen? No. We have a motion for approval. So call the vote, please.
Commissioner Talland.
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Mayor Leslie.
7C. City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance Number 2025-15. An ordinance annexing one parcel of real property into the city of Ormond Beach. Said property located at 1005 North US Highway 1, Volusia County Parcel Number 4238-01-29-0020. Setting forth zoning privileges and obligations regarding the property. Redefining the territorial boundaries of the city of Ormond Beach to include the property. Redesigning the boundaries of Zone 1 of the city of Ormond Beach to include the property. Providing for transmission, providing for severability and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2025-15, read by title only.
Okay. I don't have any cards here, so a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? No. See none. City Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Sargent.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Talland.
Yes.
Mayor Leslie.
Yes.
I will now close the public hearings. And we're going to move to 8A. City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance Number 2025-16. An ordinance amending the code of ordinance of the city of Ormond Beach by amending Section 2-300, methods of source selection and Division III, purchasing of Article IX, financial matters of Chapter 2 Administration. By amending the purchasing threshold from formal bidding and approval and amending Section 2-313, payment of claims of Division IV Risk Management Program of Article IX, Financial Matters of Chapter 2 Administration. By increasing the claims committee authorization limit to settle claims, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, providing for severability and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2025-16, read by title only.
At this time, I'm going to ask Finance Director Chris Bile to speak on the item. And then we have one card after that.
Good evening. I'm Chris Bile. I'm the Assistant Finance Director. I work in the Finance Department, and I appreciate the opportunity to present this item tonight. So staff bring this item at commission request for consideration, and we propose an increase to $75,000. This would eliminate approximately 50 agenda items annually. A survey was taken of local municipalities for a comparative study. Of that study, Port Orange came in at $100,000, all the way down to Deltona for $25,000. The reasoning behind this proposed increase is it will provide flexibility and efficiency in purchasing items within this dollar range, such as critical vehicles that currently require us to wait six to nine months, such as PD, fire, public works vehicles; critical IT contracts that need immediate renewal; chemicals due to market volatility; and miscellaneous repairs to public parks and city infrastructure to mitigate further damage. The proposed ordinance change includes language to ensure proper competition, oversight and transparency. Most items would still require a public advertisement, and all expenses would ultimately end up on a city transparency portal. So if you're not comfortable with this level that we're proposing, staff would propose $60,000 as an alternative. Anything below this level won't accomplish the objectives that I previously mentioned. Alternatively, if the procurement threshold remains unchanged, we can forego bringing solicitations to the commission prior to advertisement. This is currently not required by ordinance and would expedite the bid and RFP process. And if staff are here for any questions.
Okay. I do have one card, so I can just go to the one card, and then we'll have Chris come back with questions, okay? At this time, I'd like to call Jennifer Bright to come up and speak.
It is vital for Ormond Beach to maintain transparency and oversight in our financial decisions by keeping the purchasing cap at 25,000. The current cap is implemented to ensure responsible fiscal practices and to maintain accountability to the taxpayers. Here are some reasons to keep the existing cap. Promote fiscal discipline, which aims to control overspending and prevent budget deficits. Transparency and accountability. Fair taxpayer representation. The cap protects taxpayers by limiting the ability of city officials to make significant expenditures without broader approval, ensuring that public money is used with citizen consent. Prioritization of needs. The cap forces the city to prioritize their spending, focusing on essential services like public safety and infrastructure. Preventing unnecessary debt. The cap can be adjusted for unforeseen events, but the approval process guarantees a controlled approach. The current cap reflects the balance between allowing the city to function efficiently and protecting public resources. The current cap can be credited to several key factors. Transparent budgeting process. Strategic planning. The city can align long-term goals, ensuring that resources are allocated to high priority areas like infrastructure, public safety, and essential services. Community involvement. Efficient resource allocation. By adhering to the current purchasing cap, the city is able to focus on efficiency, reducing waste, and ensuring that funds are used effectively. These factors demonstrate how transparency, strategic planning, and community engagement can lead to successful financial management under the current $25,000 purchasing cap.
Thank you. At this time, the commission, do we want to make a motion, this way we can just go on discussion at this point, next?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay. Discussion, I saw how it brought it to hand up.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I support increasing the 25,000, but my position on this is, you know, we're blessed right now with great city staff, a very good finance director, an assistant finance director, and city manager. My concern is, what happens when we don't have those folks on board anymore? And my thought would be, the request is 75. A lot of cities were at 50. We're currently at 25. I think we just, I would like to see a compromise at 50.
And you know what, Commissioner Riley? I, I'm going to echo you on that one a little bit, too, because I did some research, and we made, we changed a policy in 1994 from 7,000 to 25,000. So I wanted to compare what your spending ability would be now versus $25,000 in 1994, and it came up with 53 to $50,000 range. So I think that, you know, was something I was thinking, too, because we want to have the same buying power that we did when this came into place in 1994. So I would be in agreeance with the 50,000 as well, just as a side note. But Deputy Mayor, I'm sorry.
You said you would be in agreement of 60. I couldn't hear what Harold said.
Oh, 50.
All right. So, Chris, would you mind for a second? So I did that analysis. So if the 25,000 in 1994 is equal to, with all those formulas, 53,588. So just putting that out there. But Chris, in some of the information that was in our packet, there was a conversation that the language would ensure proper competition, oversight, and transparency. Would you mind explaining to me what that means? How would that work?
So the items within this dollar range of the 25 to the 75, or whatever is decided upon, would still go on our public advertisement platform called DemandStar. And we would still put each of these items on there for no less than 10 business days. And that will open it to the public for, you know, everybody to supply a proposal or vote on it. And that's one of the key pieces of that, is that's something that we're going to still almost treat them as bids, but just to help facilitate the process.
Right. So just for your sake, I'm willing to go up to the 75,000. I think, and I do understand your concerns, Commissioner Riley, with, you know, we do have great staff right now, and there's a very good, high level of confidence, and you may worry down the road. But I think with some certain safeguards in place in that transparency portal, I'm okay with going with 75,000. Not higher, though.
Commissioner Sargent. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chris, are we losing transparency with this change?
I don't believe so. We're, we still, each item over $2,500 requires a requisition to be entered, and it goes through a series of workflows. The department manager still approves each of these items, finance and budgeting approve it, and then a procurement coordinator still approves it. That is a process that has been in place for as long as I've been at the city, for 19 years. So that requires, we have a platform that you can attach documents. Those can always be publicly requested. All the expenses are on the transparency site. So in our opinion, if we continue to put them on DemandStar and treat them as if they're bid for items such as like police cars that cost $71,000 to repair or replace, I'm sorry, we feel that it'll help expedite certain items, such as that, just for an example, so that we don't have to wait six or nine months for a police car. We can order it, we can do what we need to do, put it on DemandStar, try to get, you know, the quotes as quickly as possible, as competitively as possible, and move forward quickly, so that we don't have to wait.
So we're actually going to be more efficient by increasing the dollar figure, is what it appears. How many vehicles in the police department are we down that we're probably waiting for this? Are we waiting on many?
Just for clarification, so as he said, we are still going to bid all of those documents. We use the sheriff's contract annually to purchase vehicles. What happens is, sometimes dealers get vehicles, and we have to bring it to you before we can get in line for that. So we miss the opportunity, because somebody else is next in line. But it doesn't in any way subvert the purchasing process. You have to be done through a competitive process, and Randy will hold our feet to the fire, as he always does. So there's no, there's no subversion of the purchasing process.
Sure. I'm good with the 75,000. I applaud you and Kelly. We get many awards and joys for the financial responsibility that y'all do for the city of Ormond. And if down the road, things change with employees, then it can always be changed. But right now, this is going to save, what was it, 60 items from coming?
Approximately.
Approximately 60 items from coming and waiting for our police to have cars. I mean, I'm not willing to, I mean, this is going to speed up and make things more efficient, so that they're not sharing cars, or whatever the process may be. So I'm good with the 75,000. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
If I could say one thing, though, if this is a police car issue, which, you know, of course, in favor, make sure they have their police cars, but do we have a policy in place where there's always a backup police car? Because if we don't, maybe that's something that we can, you know-
We barely have enough.
Well, you have to have cars to have backups.
Correct. Okay. So do we, do we have any backups right now?
No.
We have backups, but some of these cars are wrecked, and some of them have high mileage on them. So we take them off the road. If a car gets wrecked into by somebody else, like some driver wrecks into a police car, we have to take that off the road to get fixed, and then we put one of our older cars on the road. For a long time, we weren't good at replacing police cars. We were very slow, because there was a very different mindset about how many miles should be on a police car and how long they should be driven. So it's only been in the last five years, three to five years, that we've been more aggressive in the procurement of police vehicles, and fire vehicles, for that matter, because you set aside a dedicated millage to do that. So, yes, we have backup cars. Are they desirable? No. Are they functional? Yes.
One last question for you, Joyce, while you're there. We, we meet every two weeks as a commission, besides our breaks. I mean, does this two-week window of needing a vehicle really slow down the process that much of getting another vehicle?
It can, because people that don't have that same ability to jump in when there's a vehicle available, Chris can speak more to that. We know that from time to time, dealers, there's a very specific police model that we're looking for, the type of car, and when, they just happen to become available at certain times. I don't know if Kelly and Chris can speak to that.
Over here. So it's not all just about police cars and all.
No.
I mean, these are replacing, like, I want to say air conditioning units, but machinery type things that we're waiting. I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of things that we need.
It could be a pump at the wastewater treatment plant.
Yes. And there are very specific pieces that are difficult to find, and the longer you wait for us to approve it, the longer it takes to get that piece repaired.
One key purchase was the Ames roof. We had to go out for a bid for that, because it was FEMA, and we have to follow our procurement policy. So that, for Hurricane, I think it was Ian, that took over a year, when we- When we could have had it, when everybody's fighting for roof contractors, we could have had that repaired within a month, just as an example. Because I believe that bid came back between 50 and 65 in that particular case.
Okay.
So our residents got to look at a beautiful-
Full blue tarp for over a year when it could have been done a lot sooner.
The roof.
The roof, I mean.
Right.
Yeah.
Commissioner Deaton?
I consider myself rather fiscally conservative. I analyze our budget. You know, I'm a numbers person. Kelly, Chris, thank you for always answering my questions and my last-minute questions today regarding this item. Do you still consider that we operate at a lean budget?
Of course.
I do as well. For that reason, and because I do trust our staff and trust that I don't believe you're going to overspend frivolously, I'm okay with the 75,000 as well.
Commissioner Riley?
Yeah. And again, I fully trust our staff. The only reason, you know, I say 50,000 is because in inflation dollars today, it would be roughly $53,000. But as has been said, and I appreciate Mr. Vow saying, you know, that those numbers was to be published for transparency, but there's no opportunity for citizen input. So to me, I still think that's, you know, while, yes, it's transparent, it kind of just, you know, if it's not on the agenda, there's not an opportunity for citizen input. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Riley. Any other questions before I have a city clerk call the vote? Call the vote, please, city clerk.
Commissioner Deaton? Yes. Commissioner Riley?
No.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Mayor Leslie?
No.
Okay, we're going to move on to number nine, staff action items. Sean Finley to speak on item 9A.
Yes, this is the Halpek's Drive Safety Study that we presented at the workshop earlier this afternoon. We are proposing, we're asking you to accept this study that was conducted by Burgis and Neipel, with the staff accepting your comments from the commission workshop earlier this evening.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions which you want this time?
Do we need to make a motion with those changes that we want?
Yes, or no?
Sorry. I saw you just stop you over there. I was reading ahead, I'm sorry. What was your question?
The commission would like to know if we have to make an emotion to make that, make an approval on any of that change that you mentioned.
You want to approve it officially?
You can approve it officially. Can you hear me? If you want to make the motion to include that the approval reflects the minutes from the meeting earlier today, we can do that.
Okay.
I don't know if that works out.
Well, I think the question is, I think, you know, we, during the workshop, I thought we said, you know, we, some of those changes are going to be made because of the construction on A1A. And those temporary stop signs will be removed by the contractor when that work is done. So yes, it'll be in place for a very short time, but I think we decided, I thought we suggested in the workshop, we'd wait till after all that was done, unless I'm wrong. Is that how you heard it, Commissioner Sargent?
So I want to make sure that if we're accepting this study, that those four-way stop signs are temporary, one, and that I'm not okay with that six-foot median. Those are the two big things that were on mine that I don't want.
When the contractor does the work on A1A, the contractor is one of the salt stop signs. They'll be the ones removed. They won't leave them up.
I just want to make sure.
Sean, I think your mic's off.
As with any, as with any-
As with any work that we would do from a study, we would bring that back to the commission. So if we were to do, if it was the will to do those stop signs at Amson and Standish, we would bring that back to you as a capital project. This is just a, for you, this is, we're just asking you at this time to accept the results or the presentation of that study, and that any work to be done as a result of that study be brought to you as a separate item for approval at that time.
Okay, then, so we'll see if we want to make a motion on that?
Move approval.
Who's first on that one, Susan?
Deaton.
Okay. So is there a second then? You want to do a second? Commissioner Sargent?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion on that before we call a vote on that? No? See you none. Call the vote, please.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Mayor Leslie?
Yes. Okay, we're going to move to 10, report suggestions, requests. Move on to staff and commission reports, suggestions, and requests, starting with city manager. Joyce Shannon.
All right. Mike?
Mike, Mike, it's on. Maybe I'm not talking into it.
Doesn't want to hear you.
All right. Next commission meeting, Tuesday, April 15th, we have a stormwater workshop before the regular commission meeting. On May 6th, we have a final goal-setting workshop before the next commission meeting. Upcoming workshops for your future planning purposes, Tuesday, May 6th, I just mentioned the final goal-setting workshop. Tuesday, June 3rd, mark that one, it's an important one, it's a capital budget plan.
Are you going to send all these?
Yes.
Thank you.
You should have all of these already, but we will resend them. Tuesday, July 22nd is your operating budget workshop. Just an update on Casson Park, the contractor continues the work on the new bait shop bathroom building and anticipate setting the roof trusses this week. I think I saw Ike here, I don't know if he's still here. Periodic closures to the park will be limited and mostly involve curb work and pavement thereafter. So the parking lot is set to reopen by the end of this week. Is that still on track, Sean?
That is correct, yes.
So that's good news. And I think you can see the work that's going on over there. Legislatively, first, I want to applaud your efforts in Tallahassee to take the time from your professional jobs to go to Tallahassee and lobby for our issues is very important, and we certainly appreciate that as staff. The stormwater analysis request that we had up there received an allocation of $500,000 in the Senate budget, but not in the House, so they have to reconcile those two. So hopefully, we beat the odds there, I don't know. The Senate has filed an amendment to allocate $350,000 for the Miracle Fields. We'll know more about the formal adoption of the amendment tomorrow. So once that amendment becomes formal, then it still has to be figured out between the two entities. Efforts were effective in Tallahassee. We continue to work with our lobbyists as the budget process continues, and hopefully we will continue to receive funding for the, our priorities. Importantly, please mark your calendar, the Ormond Beach Police Department Unity Tour is going to be happening again. So they will leave on the early morning of May 8th, and they, they'll conduct their ride, and then they will be in Washington, DC on May 12th. Several of you have attended that arrival at, I think it's the, is it the police, law enforcement memorial museum? It's a really prestigious event, and I am so proud of our department that has continued to participate in that every year. So that is May 12th that they will arrive in DC, and the following night, they have a candlelight vigil on the mall honoring fallen police officers. So our riders this year are Corporal Summerlot, Corporal Ortiz, Officer Medina, and they will be taking three bicycles with them. The motor escort will be Sergeant Caleb Brown, Lieutenant John Boisner, tentatively, and two police motorcycles. So support staff include Lieutenant Tom Larson, Officer Melissa Edmonds, Officer Ally Andereg, and PIO Pauline Delang will go, Dulang, I hope I said that right, will also be attending. And Lieutenant Larson's patrol F-150 and police department enclosed trailer that will transport all of those items to.
Can we request Chief Godfrey ride again?
He is riding in a separate race, which is this weekend. He's riding in, I don't know if it's the Florida 250. See, I got it right. He's riding in the Florida 250 from Miami, and they're going to finish in the shores? I got it. And that's on Saturday morning, right?
Sunday.
Sunday morning. So do you know what time you're coming in? So I'll give you more, we'll have more updates.
So that gives them a month, right, to get ready for DC?
No, he can't do both of those rides.
Oh, dead gum, okay.
He's done, he's done that ride a number of times. We appreciate your confidence in him, and, but I think his legs will be toast, so. Anyway, we're so proud of them and what they do and how they represent our city, and they always come back safe and sound, and that's the most important thing. Let's see. But if you're interested in going to DC to see them arrive, it's really, it's really quite spectacular. They have people from all over the country that ride, and it's really amazing. So let us know, we'll help coordinate that. And I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any, in me tonight.
See you none. Thank you, Joyce.
Inches from a clean getaway.
Assistant City Manager Sean Finley.
Nothing further. Have a good night.
City Attorney Randy Hayes.
Good night.
Wow.
Wow.
This evening, we'll begin with Commissioner Sargent.
I got more than a good night. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'll start off with Belvedere, as we got great news that they have decided to chosen a site up in Palm Coast. This was a great job by the community coming together, the city of Ormond denying water and sewer to the current location, and to Senator Leake for all of his work in Tallahassee as a representative to secure the $10 million of funding that really helped this move. I know that a lot of people want to write letters or do things, and there's still an active application, to my best knowledge, at the county. So it would be improper to really do anything further on this site. And the one, I think, chess piece that we had with this was that we did not offer water and sewer, therefore, we did not have to annex the property in. And so I think we need to be very happy that they chose a site, but be cautious, because there's still an application active with the county. So until shovels hit the ground running, I'm not willing to start celebrating just yet. I'm very optimistic, but I want to be cautious that those shovels hit the ground and it really goes in there before we really celebrate or, I think, move forward with anything. Florida League of Cities was great up in Tallahassee to meet with our legislators. And thank you to staff for the detailed binder. It was the best binder that staff put together in the three years that I've gone up there. It was very detailed, and it was very good to meet with our lobbyist Doug Bell, who's very in tuned with our leaders in Tallahassee. I know we had a couple residents talk about code enforcement. I know this is coming back to us with our strategic planning, May 6th. I know that several of us in our strategic planning expressed our desire for a proactive approach instead of a reactive approach, and that'll be coming back to us with that report on May 6th. And it is very difficult with, when you have Florida statutes that say you can't have anonymous complaints, what we can and can't do, kind of have the hands tied, and it's unfortunate, but I do think that we're moving forward in the right direction. I did provide each of y'all with a document, and Susan, if you can put it in the record as well, I don't know if you need a copy. This was, I did discuss, called the realtor that's selling the property on Willmet that I just have brought up a couple times. And they did a due diligence summary that they had Zeb Cohen conduct. I'd just really like to read a couple things, because I really think this is an opportunity for us to buy a piece of land and preserve it. And I'll just, a couple things I highlighted in this report, it says, "Given the site's proximity to Thompson Creek, Laurel Creek, and the Timoca River, the property presents an excellent opportunity for preservations and flood mitigation. Other environmental assets on the heavily forested property include nine historic trees, surface swaters, and wetlands. Dedicating the property for preservation would protect the site's natural features, prevent fill in the flood plain, and avoid any additional runoff from reaching the Timoca River and impaired water body." And then another just sentence that says, "Since the property is in Zone AE and a regulatory flood zone, ultimately discharging into an impaired body water, the Timoca River, stormwater treatment will require a dry system or treatment boxes to a wet box." So the developer, I guess the owner of this property did this, I didn't ask them to do it, they emailed it to me, because I've expressed that I think it's a very key piece of property that we should really look at, because as I've stated before, 20 acres, five of it's buildable, it's going to take six feet of fill to build on it. And here, we have an opportunity, as, you know, the gentleman that spoke about the bike trails out on Airport Road, this is another opportunity in the center of our city to preserve some property. And the city owns the property behind it for the water or for fleet maintenance is back there. So this is a, I just think it's a great opportunity for us to move forward on. I don't know how my fellow commissioners and mayor, how y'all see this. It's a very detailed report. I think Susan can make it public for the record. I'd like to know y'all's thoughts on this, because I think this is a great opportunity, and I just, I really don't want to see us in six months being a proven, an apartment project on this property.
So we're going to have, oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. I just want to say, can you guys hear me? That I appreciate the property owner doing this, and I'll definitely take a look at it, but from there, you guys have a question, so I'll go with Deputy Mayor first.
Yeah. My question is, when are we discussing the stormwater and flooding? In two weeks? So I think this is a very appropriate, I don't think we should do anything at this point. I really appreciate the information. I don't think it's going to sell in two weeks where we have to worry about it, but I think that this is definitely extremely worthy of discussion, and I'm looking forward to that. Can we talk numbers?
Well, I mean, they're asking too, but obviously, we know that's not a, I don't think, we would have to get an appraisal and, I mean-
I'm open to it.
We'd have to do our due diligence as a city. I'm not saying that you go in and you pay full ass price, that's not how we conduct business, and it wouldn't be wise to spend the taxpayers' money on that. And I think there's a lot of-
Potential.
There's a lot of, not only potential, but there's funding sources to secure this property.
Agreed.
So I think that's what we, that's what I really want to look at. I'm not saying that we take this money out of the general fund or anything like that. I think we look at grant money that is available to secure a key piece of property that is just very environmentally sensitive in the core of our city, and we don't have, look around, core of our city, we don't have much of this left, so.
Sure. With that being said, I'm definitely open to it. I can appreciate that this is 100% in a flood zone, and it would be detrimental to see a developer, for instance, buy it and build it up and be detrimental to surrounding properties. That would be a concern for me. Yeah, I'm definitely open to it.
Commissioner Riley?
I agree with Commissioner Talland. I think we could look at it when we look at the stormwater workshop, but I do also see in this report a lot of protected species on that property that may make it difficult for development to begin with, so we can take a look at it.
Would staff, have, better be enough time for staff to put something together for us in that workshop that gives us a little more information on this property?
We can take a look and see what we can do. We have reached out to a couple appraisers. They're about six to eight weeks out from, of what they can do to prepare a true property appraisal on it, so we wouldn't have that available in two weeks, but we can take a look and, I, we'll, I've took a quick look at this, and I know Joyce has, we can take a little bit more look and see if there's any more input that we can give you at that time.
Okay, yeah, so just put it on the agenda for the next workshop, and we'll discuss from there. Is that okay with everybody? Okay, fair enough. Thank you. Commissioner Sargent?
The last thing I have is I know we had a great strategic planning, a couple days, it was very positive. And then that Thursday, we all received, I think it was Thursday or Friday, I don't have the email up, we received- or Friday, and I don't have the email up. We received an email from the Executive Director at Barracks of Hope. And I believe, Mr. Mayor, you toured the facility, and it stated something to the effect of funds that are available for them and what are the next steps. Can you elaborate what was discussed there, just so we can talk about it as a commission? Because I don't know that we have available funds to donate to anyone. So, I'm just kind of, if we have available funds, our taxes are too high, because I don't think we just have pots laying around.
You know, and that's a good question. I'm glad you brought that up, because when I saw the email, I almost, you know, my eyeballs almost went on my head. It was suggested to me by somebody to tour the facility. You know, you all know that I serve on the First Step Board. And so, it was brought to my attention. I should check out this other facility, how clean it is and how well they do with veterans particularly. So, I went to go meet with the director over there. But as you know, with these nonprofit organizations, they think that because I'm going there to tour, that we're giving them a check. And I made it very clear to the director that we're not giving a check. I'm just here to look at it, because I thought maybe it would be, you know, something that we can recommend, well, at least our officers and people that do our outreach, to any homeless vets out there in our community that can go there. And we don't, we're not required to give them any money in order to participate in that program right now. So, if you're all okay with that, maybe we can direct staff to get the information on providing that. It's another outlet. But it was, the tour was only just to look at the facility and just kind of see what they do. And they also, the director asked if any of you want to come out and tour. You call anytime, and you can go in there and take a look at the facilities and find out more what they do.
My stance on this is, we're already donating $85,000 to First Step Shelter. I am not willing to use taxpayer money to fund another project that's very specific to veterans. I'm a disabled veteran myself. I think they do great services there. But if the residents want to donate their money and get a tax write-off, that's what they should be able to do. We should not be doing that with taxpayer money. So, I'm a no for that. And First Step Shelter, we're donating money for, and if I remember correctly, I wasn't here at the time, but if I remember correctly, Randy, we are participating in that, because it helps our law enforcement officers to have a place to bring individuals. And because we have that ability, then, or we can arrest them. I mean, and not so, our officers are a lot more compassionate, so I hate to say it like that. But we're contributing to that for a specific reason. And I don't know if we, if those funds went somewhere else, or if we had other funds. I just don't think that would work out, and we would comply to that ordinance. So, I'm a no with donating any more money to anywhere else.
If I may, though, I'm just going to jump back in there again. Again, this wasn't a tour to give them money. It was just a tour, just to give homeless people that are veterans another possibility of somewhere to go. And the city would not have to give any money right now if we wanted to allow individuals, as that is another option, to go to, which was a cleaner facility, focuses on different, their focus is a little different than First Step, because, you know, they have, their program is built on people with those type of disabilities that were in the military. So, I just toured it because it was suggested. It was a nice facility, and it was just something else that I thought that we can offer, and we don't have to give them any money. It's just something else to offer.
I think we're, I just found the email now. And I think my concern is where, I'll just read the email from the interim Executive Director. It says, "Mr. Leslie, thank you for visiting Halifax Urban Ministries Barracks of Hope's Veterans Program. Ms. Conway, our program manager, mentioned that you enjoyed the tour she provided. She also noted the possibility of available funds from the City of Ormond. Could you please advise as on the next steps? We are very interested in continuing our partnership with Ormond Beach. Whenever you're in the area, please stop by our main campus, Hope Place. We love sharing our work with others." So, that's where, from reading that, it appears that there was money that was discussed. So, that's where I'm just.
So, I'm here to tell you that there was no money discussed. You know, like I said, it was just a tour. She did ask if we were going to donate money. I said, "No, I did not this time. I just wanted to see what the facility looked like, and just wanted to see if there was another option for people to go to that are homeless in the streets right now in our city, that are disabled veterans."
Very well. That's all I have. Good night.
Next, we have Commissioner Deaton.
Thank you. We spent last week in Tallahassee for legislative days, speaking with local representatives about the needs for Ormond Beach. I am proud to have cultivated such great relationships with our representatives in Tallahassee. Those relationships are always helpful when we are in their offices, asking for money or needs for our community. I'd like to thank staff for preparing us prior to leaving for Tallahassee. That thorough binder was especially helpful for me. So, I appreciate that. Thank you. Regarding the gentleman that was here for proactive code enforcement, as you all know, in strategic planning, proactive code enforcement is very important to me. I did respond to him, and I sure hope that we get to discuss that further. I would like to personally thank Senator Tom Leake, formerly Representative and Chair of the House Budget Committee, for ensuring that Belvedere was placed in the 2024 budget, so that the Department of Commerce could assist in finding a more suitable location for the fuel farm. I'd also like to thank Representative Chase Tremont, Volusia County, and City of Ormond Beach for your hand in this. The community of Ormond Beach deserves a big hand as well for coming together with one common goal in mind. This project proves that it certainly takes the village. I am saddened that Flagler will now have to go through the same battle, but I am confident that they now have a better understanding of the challenges ahead, and will put up one heck of a fight. With that, have a good night.
Thank you. Commissioner Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I won't, I'll just briefly touch, I thought our trip to Tallahassee for legislative days was beneficial for Ormond Beach. I think it was beneficial for our legislators to know what our needs are and what our asks are. Staff did do a fantastic job with the binder, and I would like to thank Assistant City Manager Sean Finley and our Economic Development Director, Brian Roden, for their attendance. One of the things we talked about in the workshop this afternoon, CRAs. And we know that there's bills going through Tallahassee that may kill future CRAs, maybe even some current CRAs. That bill may be dying on the vine. We don't know. But it was discussed, too, that our current, there may be a temperament in our current county council as to not extend or award any new CRAs. And as Councilman Kent said tonight, the relationship between Volusia County and Ormond Beach is probably as strong as ever. And I think this might be a good time to petition the county council, if we are interested in continuing our CRAs, extending our CRAs and creating new ones, because we did talk about that in our strategic plan workshop. So, that's just one thing to consider. I don't think, you know, I always hate to hear that, you know, somebody says, "Well, it's dead on arrival." You know, I don't take no easily. So, I would like us to explore, you know, extending our current CRAs and maybe creation of a couple of new ones. Congratulations to the Dog Beach folks. That was a great one today at the county council. We do, it is nice. I get a lot of phone calls and emails from people thanking us for the Dog Beach. They've really enjoyed taking their dogs down there. Belvedere, again, I agree with Commissioner Sargent and echo the sentiments of Commissioner Deaton. You know, I'm not going to be thrilled until they start breaking ground, because, again, they do still have an air permit out there. It's not over till it's over, as Yogi Bear used to say. So, Yogi Bear, rather, used to say, "It ain't over till it's over." So, but I would like to thank our community. You came out. You supported this. We were with you. The county was with you. And again, Senator Tom Leake was very helpful with that. So, we'd like to thank everyone involved. The goal-setting workshop, I thought, was very good. I thought Doug Thomas, the facilitator, did a fantastic job. I was actually telling Joyce, I thought it was a little bit better than our strategic workshop, or strategic planning workshop from two years ago. So, looking forward to the results of that. Volusia League of Cities Dinner last Thursday over in Deland, very well attended. Each mayor was asked to bring small business owners from the community. Mayor Leslie invited Dana and Sharon Kamade that own 31 Supper Club, and I thought that we were well represented having them there. Lastly, I'll end on kind of a downer. I'm very disappointed with the Florida State Park system and what they have done to Timoca State Park. I had a feeling, when they decided they wanted to pave that road, that it would have to widen the road. It's difficult to pave a dirt road and not widen it. And the amount of historic trees that were taken out, in my opinion, has destroyed a lot of the charm, the old Florida charm of the state park. You know, I keep hearing the argument, people with RVs were getting stuck. Maybe it's not a place for an RV. State parks aren't K.A. campgrounds. I know, because I have an RV. I don't take my RV to Timoca State Park. It's not the place. K.A.? Maybe. So, shame on the park system. They should put their priorities elsewhere, like maybe restoring Chief Timoca. With that, I'll say good night.
Thank you, Commissioner Riley. Deputy Mayor Tolland?
Great. Thank you so much. I have not too much to share, but I do want to let you all know all the fun things that I've been doing. A lot of them have been with you, but some have not. We all got an invitation from Lucy Jackman to enjoy the Performing Arts Center, and I took advantage of that and saw Spyro Gyra with my husband. And it was just amazing to see the enthusiasm of the residents in a full house. What a, you know, what a beautiful remodel. And it was a fun time. And I would ask that you all partake in that sometime. I attended the Volusia County Elected Official Roundtable, where they presented updates from the Stormwater and Flooding Task Force. I virtually attended the TPO workshop identifying their long-range plan up to 2050. It's amazing how much work is done this far in advance. I was also able to enjoy the Hungarian festivities at the casement with Mayor Leslie, and was pleased when the consulate recognized our very own Siobhan Daly for her support of the Hungarian history over the many years. I attended Team Volusia Annual Meeting, was blown away by the financial impact and the business growth in our area and vicinity. I was invited to attend the Florida Power and Lunchon at Embry-Riddle, where some very good information was shared. And I'm sure at some point, we will probably enjoy the increase, increases in fees at some point, you know? It's kind of where everything's going. I enjoyed the Ormond Beach Chamber Women-to-Women event, and that was held at the Hard Rock Cafe. There was a very dynamic speaker from Advent Health, Dr. Audrey Gregory. Tended Volusia League Dinner in Deland. And lastly, the goal-setting, and lastly, participating in the Volusia County Legislative Action Days, where we shared our priorities as a city with our legislators. And as, I'm on the Volusia League of Cities Board, and shared their positions on all these bills, fighting, as you know, the CRA and property taxes and all the other. So, it's been a really busy time, and I'm only sharing this with you because I officially retired from my nursing career. Maybe it's been three weeks. It's been a weird change. I'm going to say I'm going to welcome it at some point, but I'm trying to reinvent myself and kind of figure out what I'm going to do with my last chapter of my life, maybe in the volunteer world.
Next chapter.
Next chapter. Final chapter?
Next.
Next chapter. Okay. Anyway, so, that's why I have the option to do all these wonderful things, representing you guys in the community. As far as Belvedere is concerned, I, I'm sorry. As far as Belvedere, I want to thank staff. I want to thank the previous commission, okay, that really fought. The county, our legal Esau Parrot, which we forgot to mention up here, and our business leaders, our friends in Tallahassee, and particularly Senator Leake, Representative Tremont. And last but not least, our residents that attended many meetings, held signs, protested against the fuel farm in Ormond Beach. And I personally and publicly would like to thank Mr. Tim Greggsby for reaching out to me early on to make us aware of the air permit that was pulled for Belvedere before it even became something that everybody knew. It was really because of him that started this, the whole ball rolling of our awareness. He truly deserves the credit for bringing the proposed fuel farm to light. So, I just want to say thank you, and I appreciate him. As far as the Stormwater Task Force, it's very important that the city participate in these meetings regarding flooding and stormwater with the Elected Officials Roundtable. And Ms. Shanahan, I would love to see Mr. Finley, if possible, attend and represent Ormond Beach. And as an elected, I'd be honored to go and participate as well. If not, I'll at least be there and listen in. The issues that we're facing, flooding and stormwater, are countywide, and collaboration is absolutely critical. Last but not least, well, two things, code enforcement. Wondering if we could ask our police, or Chris Mason, or Chief Godfrey, to reach out to the gentleman that lives on Kennelworth?
[inaudible]
Okay. Thank you. And I know that my fellow commissioners, I'm just trying to piggyback on comments that you guys have made multiple times at other meetings on homelessness. Our homeless population seems to be increasing. I've received numerous calls regarding such. I really don't know what we can do. I know we all recognize there's a problem, and our residents are not happy. I got a call today about a gentleman whose wife won't walk her dog on the sidewalk, because there's a gentleman that's there. So, I, you know, the more we can bring it to light, if we can do a workshop, or, I know we're doing some things. I just don't know what we can do. But I also would like to share this book that I picked up at, I don't know, I can't remember where I picked it up, but anyway, it's for staff. And then finally, announcements, Earth Day Celebration and Tree Giveaway will be held at the EDC on April 19, from 9 to 2. It's sponsored by Echo Regrow Volusia, Regrow the Loop in Ormond Beach. There'll be a beautiful selection of, drum roll, native trees available. So, please take advantage, and everybody, go plant a tree. Good night.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Commissioner Deaton just asked to say something real quick, so.
Can I ask where we are on the homeless or the transient workshop that we've spoken about a few times?
We haven't nowhere.
Okay. We did request a workshop a few times, but we don't have an update on it.
I thought we did request one.
We did.
You did. We haven't had.
Oh.
Okay.
Well, we've had so many workshops, so I'm getting so confused. So, yes, if you could kind of put that on your list of things to do, it'd be great. Thanks.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Well, we had a month off, even though we were all kind of working still, but I hope everybody enjoyed the time that they did have off from the last meeting that we had. This past Saturday, we had the Mayor's Fitness Challenge. We had 35 weigh-ins. I believe my colleague next to me had a weigh-in, too.
I will weigh.
To be determined on that one. Also, while we're sitting here, I'd like to congratulate Randy Fine. He is our new Congressional Representative for CD6 that replaced the former Mike Walz. We did have legislative days last week. It was a great time. I think we're the only city that had everyone in the commission with us, I believe. So, that's at least what I was told from some of the feedback. So, that's, we had a good presence. So, good job, everyone. We had a great time, I think, and we had a little bit of team building together as well. So, I really appreciate that as well. On March 17, I was asked to do some Meals on Wheels, and it was the same time that Chief Godfrey. We had a good time. He rode in his own car, and I rode in another car, but it was really nice to bring some meals to folks, and they were shocked to see me. And I said, "Well, I'm here to help you out." As far as Belvedere goes, you know, some great news. Thank you to everyone who was involved, Senator Leake, like I said, the former commission, all the residents that were out there, too, as well. But, you know, I will echo some of my colleagues here by saying that, you know, it's not over till it's over. So, we just got to be a little cautious on that. So, I agree as well. But hopefully, we'll have a plan in place after the, you know, that whole project moves on what's going to happen with that property in the next step. So, I think staff said that they might be working on something, and the county council as well, or the county. So I think staff said that they might be working on something and the county council as well, or the county staff, so excited to hear about that. Congratulations to Deputy Mayor on your retirement. I just put that in my notes. Nursing is just not an easy thing. And I appreciate everything that nurses do. I am not a needle person, and I can tell you that a nurse was the one that helped me get through that with giving blood. So thank you for your service. It's really, really greatly appreciated. I know we had a tough night with this fluoride thing. I really, like, you know, thanked all, everyone in the dais here. I know it was a tough decision, but I'm proud that we all stuck together in this thing and did what we had to do. Sometimes we have to make tough decisions as leaders, but I'm thankful that, to have this group here that stuck, stood behind us as well. With that, I'm going to close it out, so everyone have a good night. Thank you.